... meeting, tonight is July the 11th, 2019, and it is 7:00 PM. If you would, please stand for the prayer and pledge.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you've given us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The fourth item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I believe before we do that, we need to remove item 12A.
Yes, Mayor, if it's a pleasure of the council, we will certainly appreciate it.
That's Mayor, I'll entertain your motion.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we could add some discussion at the end of new business regarding the playground, I'd appreciate that.
If it would be all right with you, we'd like to do that at item 7.
That's fine.
Agenda will be amended to discuss park situation under item 7.
So, motion to approve amended agenda.
Second.
Motion of Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Burks. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor.
Item 6, citizens' comments.
We have two tonight, Mayor. The first one is Ms. Eileen Brogan.
Eileen, please approach. Give your name and address, please, ma'am.
I'm Eileen Brogan, and I live at 7106 Brush Creek Road South in Fairview.
Welcome.
And I'm president of Friends of Bowie Park, and I just want to let you know that the Friends would like to partner with the city to rebuild the playground at Bowie Park. And pursuant to that, we would like to meet with the Board of Commissioners and City Manager, Parks and Landscape Board, the park staff, so that everybody can be on one page and move forward in one direction instead of eight different ones. And meanwhile, we have our membership meeting this Saturday, July 13th, at 9:00 AM in the city's, in the nature center. It's promising to be a much larger meeting than we're used to having. And if we have official documentation, say, in the form of a resolution perhaps, that the city is in fact going to build a playground, then we can start fundraising for it. We can't in fact ask anybody to contribute to a playground if the city is not documented that they are going to build it. So, we would also like to co-host, if you are open to this, a community meeting to decide on what type of playground, and have a professional facilitator so that we're not, again, going in 18 different directions, and so that we ensure that the public is behind whatever it is that we end up building. Because without public support, I really don't think that it's going to happen. I know that this is not in the city budget, and we're going to have to do a lot of fundraising, grant writing, and have a lot of volunteers help. And to do that, we're going to have to have people who are behind it. So, to do that, we need to find out what the people want. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Krista Zavick. I apologize if I got that name wrong.
Please approach the podium. Give your name and address, please, ma'am.
I am nervous. My name's Krista Zavick, and I live at 12101 Park Village Court.
Welcome.
Thank you. I apologize for my tears. I am here due to the playground being torn down, and being the fact that we cannot go back in time and redo what was done in regards to my understanding and many other mothers in this town and surrounding communities. I ask that we can all please join together and be on one page to get this playground rebuilt. There is much more than just this playground that we go to. We have the lake and the trails, and we all love it. But this playground, for my family and I know for many others, is the one place that we can go to without anybody's permission or having to knock on their door prior because we don't have a backyard. And we're working on getting a backyard of our own one day, but right now, this is the place that we get to go to without having to ask our friends to allow us to play. So I just ask, please, to hear us and to also make the information at hand more available to us in the community. It was not put out there, sorry, it was not put out there in a manner that allowed the community to know that this was going on. And it's not about the fact that it happened, it's about the fact that it wasn't done in a way where it was such a shock. And also, the fact that there's no plan prior to it coming down, not being in place, is a huge concern for us as well. I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 7, public announcements, awards, and recognitions. I believe we've dedicated this item to the park discussion. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, just a brief update, and a reminder for how we got here, and kind of a suggested timeline going forward, although there are several moving parts to this, but we want to make sure that we do this obviously appropriately. I would be remiss if I didn't think, before we get into some of this information, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, they've been a partner, not only of the city but of the park itself, for many, many years. And I know that their participation, past and future, is crucial to the, to the future of the park. We get that, and we certainly wanted to just take a moment to thank them and understand the partnership going forward that's going to be necessary. How, how we arrived at this, and there have been several discussions, and I just want to recap that, so everyone kind of understands how we got to where we are today and what that decision was, and some of the brief information as to how we, how we did that. As it relates to the process and the timeline, we met, we've had a series of discussions about the future of the park for some time now, to figure out what's the best direction to go for the park as a whole. Subsequent to that, we had some meetings with the Friends, with staff, with everyone to try and figure out what can be done there, and the discussion came about regarding the general condition of the playground. The playground was installed in 1998. It was installed to be, with a 20-year lifespan, so to speak. And we knew that we were getting close on needing to do some work on that. So as we got into that, a, an attempt to determine whether or not the park could be repaired in its condition, or made to be satisfactory for additional use for the long term, could be accomplished, and we learned that that could not. And there were some communications between the Friends from the original builder of the park, or the manufacturer of the park playground, so to speak. And we knew that a repair of the park, the way that it existed, or the playground, the way that it existed, was just not possible. Not that it wasn't feasible, or that it wasn't preferred, but it just, just simply was not in a condition where it could be repaired with any lifespan whatsoever, and in fact need to be removed. Within that, there was some discussion about the best way to do that. One of the discussions was giving some advanced notice that the park, or the playground, would be removed. The general discussion that centered around not providing that notice was the fact that we did not want to promote any increased use in the interim, meaning if it was announced that the playground was going to be removed in two weeks, four weeks, whatever the timeline would be, the discussion was that we did not want to encourage additional load on the playground equipment more than it would normally sustain during the normal course of visits or activity to the park. We just felt that it wasn't in the best interest of anyone who will play on the playground, or anyone else who would be associated with it, that we increased an activity on the, on the equipment when we were not exactly sure of its security. So we wanted to make sure we didn't increase any risk through that way. After that, the discussion was, how do we facilitate the removal of the playground, and what's the best way to do that? And there were a couple of items discussed. The first was just simply announce that the park, the playground's closed. The difficulty with the announcement that the playground is closed is that you then have to police the security of the playground itself. If the playground's closed, then we have to ensure that no one can access the playground. Within that, you had to look at a couple of items. Number one, do you simply put security out there to ensure that no one accesses the playground, which is difficult to do? There was a discussion about some caution tape or other tape around the playground itself, notifying the public that it would be closed, or cautioned or should not be entered. The discussion after that was, does that become an enticement to people who go out, and the curiosity factor then lead them to some engagement on the playground that we just weren't comfortable doing? We were afraid that it became more of an enticement or attractive than it was a deterrent. So the discussion was not to take that avenue. Another avenue that was considered was temporary fencing, so that the park would stay open, that you could do a temporary fencing around the park, like you see on a construction zone or some other thing. The considerations there were that, number one, we don't have access to that type of fencing readily available, that would need to be brought about. Secondly, we really didn't have a way to secure a known secure, 24-hour security of that fencing. And then lastly, if fencing was installed, and if a child were to make their way into the playground and become injured in some way, then the fencing that was intended to prevent children from entering the playground now becomes a barrier for our first responders to enter the playground, which delayed the, the item that we're trying to prevent. So that discussion was brought about to, to limit, limit that. And then discussion of a long-term closure, so that we could move forward with the removal of the playground. The removal of the playground itself was not a simple task. The city did not have the equipment necessary to remove it. We did not have the debris removal ability at that time, so we could not simply go in and go out on, on one day's notice or two days' notice. There was an effort that would have to be made to secure the removal in a safe manner. Considering all of those factors, and considering the timeline that we could put in place to remove it, the general discussion was that it would simply be best to leave the playground as it was until such time that it could be fully removed in a safe manner. That was the overall discussion, that's how we arrived at where we were, and that's what took place as a part of that. It really was not any more complicated than that. The primary concern was the overall safety of anyone who would be involved with the use of the playground, and within that, what can the city do to prevent any increased use or increased risk as a part of that? Based on all of those factors, and a consideration of what's the least worst decision that can be made, the least worst decision was arrived at, that it would simply remain open until we could schedule the secure removal of the playground, and that's, that's where we got to. I understand it's unfortunate, this is an impassioned discussion, and it should be. I think if you look back 22 years at what took place in the park at the time, with the development of the park, it was unbelievable that, that that was done in the manner that it was. There's, there's an amount of gratitude that can't be expressed fully enough to, to the group there. I think moving forward, if nothing else, the interest should be that, that any replacement of that playground should be done in such a manner, we all agree, that it shows an honor to the work that was done to install the first playground. I, I think that's very important as we go forward. So, that is a very brief overview of how we arrived at the removal of the playground in the manner that we did. I'd be glad to answer any questions we, we have on that. But again, the discussions were, what's the least worst decision that can be made related to the removal? That's how we arrived at the removal, and that's where we are tonight. So, again, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on that, but that's, that's how we arrived there, and we look forward to the replacement of the playground at some point.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
I think it's very important going forward, outside of the, whatever steps and plan we have to do to replace the playground, but we also need to have in place a plan to replace that playground in the future. I've talked to you about that, I know. I think it's important that we, once we determine what the cost of that playground is, and have that installed, and determine what that lifespan is, we do a schedule where we have a line item in the budget to set aside X amount per year, so that when we get to the end of the life of that second playground, that that money's already there, so that we can replace it, so we're not having to deal with this, like this again.
Right.
So I think that has to be part of the solution going forward. So, just keep that in mind, please.
Sure. I, I would suggest as we go forward, and we get to the point that a playground is reinstalled, that a, a simple fix for that would be, you could do this by ordinance, where you would just annually fund the depreciation of the playground. In other words, if you're gonna, if you're going to say that the new playground has a 25-year life, and it has a $250,000 cost, then you would just simply have a line item in your budget for $10,000 each year that would simply fund the depreciation, so you could, you move forward that. If you wanted to be aggressive with that, you could do that in such a way where you fund a little more than what that averaged out number would be, because forever's a long time, and 25 years is a long time. I think part of the concern, and certainly from, from one of our, our guests tonight, was, what do you do in the interim? I, I don't, I don't think there would be a negative discussion about the removal of the playground, given the condition that it's in, and I don't think that anything other than positive will come from the rebuilding of a new playground. I think the interim period is, is the question, and I think if we could fund that depreciation in such a way, so when the next playground has to be replaced, there's a manner to maybe replace a playground before one is, its removal's necessary in, in some way. So, there are lessons learned here. I think the, the primary goal with this, is this, was like you said, to put a plan in place, so we know going forward, and the generations after us know going forward, that a playground will always be an integral part of that park, regardless of the condition of a playground that exists at that time.
Is there any further discussion?
One other thing. Mr. McCoy sent an email out today, I don't know if anyone, if everyone has had a chance to read it or not, very detailed, from a very detailed person, kind of the steps needed to do a project like this, and what different things we need to factor in. So, if you haven't read that yet, please do, it's very informative, and I think it'd be very helpful moving forward also. Also, as the representative announced, there will be a meeting this Saturday with the Friends, 9 o'clock, I believe, is that correct? All right, so if you're interested in the park, in the playground, I highly recommend showing up, seeing what you can do to volunteer and help moving forward. The park is not just a playground, it's a big area, and I'm sure they can use help in other things as well in the meantime, so please attend. Thank you.
Item 8, staff comments and monthly reports. A, police chief. Chief Humphries.
June was a busy month for us. Statistically, it doesn't show, statistics are down a little bit throughout everything, so we invest a lot of manpower in the July 3rd event, so we put a lot of resources towards that, and then it's a month, just like July, where we try to get our, our people off as much as possible for their vacation time, and that again reflects through the month as, as you see that manpower's gone. The, the first thing you see is overtime's down a little bit, which is a good thing, 131 hours. And then our training hours, we, we scaled back our training during those, those months, so we can get those people gone. Go ahead, Keith. The call volume was down also, 949 to 838, and that again is, a lot of that, I look back through the report with some self-initiated stuff, and that's, that's because you have manpower gone, so the self-initiated stuff suffers a little bit. Go ahead, Keith. The arrest stayed pretty consistent, though, 95 to 110. The domestics were down, one DUI, and the drug charges, and that stems right there specifically from self-initiated activity. You see that drop in that, that's, that comes from that. And thefts are the same. Citations are down, again, self-initiated, those officers gone on shift and leaving the shifts in, they're responding to calls and not creating a lot of new stuff. Traffic accidents were up just a tad bit, fortunately, no injuries and no fatalities for the month. Okay? And that's pretty much it on the public relations. Again, we had no public relations effort, most of our effort was going towards what you'll see in the report for July, the, the July month, was a lot of effort towards getting the planning, a lot of the, the things that the PD provides for that manpower, did a lot of that stuff. So, that's it for the month. Any questions?
Thank you, chief. Fire chief, Chief Hughes.
For the month of June, we had 104 emergency calls. These included eight overlapping incidents. Again, that's, we were out on one call, got another call while we were still on one, or at the same time we were going out on. We had four automatic or mutual aid events that we assisted neighboring departments, whether it was in the county or another county or city. We had one lost child in the park, he was found. We coordinated with the police department to find that child. And then we spent a significant amount of time on the I-40 hazardous material event on the Friday a couple weeks ago. We sent a total of 11 responders out there, not all at one time, it was a mix of volunteers and on-duty staff, but we sent them out in two shifts to help out with that incident.
Chief, can you tell us how many departments had to respond to that incident?
So, we had Metro's hazmat team was there. Metro did the initial extrication of the driver, Kingston Springs, it was their call. They were a little overwhelmed with the amount of manpower and the equipment it needed. We assisted them fairly often on the interstate calls, just, they're just not equipped to handle some of the extracations they have on the interstate. So, Metro was there with a hazmat team and an engine company. Dixon had their EMA there. Williams County EMA was there. Fairview, we were about the second group in, we assisted with foam suppression while they were trying to over, keep the, the trailer cooled off. We did a decon line for them. Kingston Springs was there for a little while, I think they, they got overwhelmed fairly early and, and kind of took a backseat. Franklin's hazmat team, Brentwood's hazmat team was there, and then Ashland City was there responding. So, there were several agencies there, and, and we were there until well after midnight for the next morning.
I wanted to say thank you. My understanding, it was extremely hot out there, over 12 hours that you guys were out there, very dangerous situations, so thank you.
For training for the month of June, we had a total of 445 hours of training. The pie shows the breakdown. Got everything from driver training to the company training, or EMS training that we go through, and facility training. We sent four firefighters to a live burn training down in Chapel Hill. They asked if we would like to come down and participate in that. That was right at the end of, or the first of June, first weekend in June, we went down there. They acquired a house from someone, and they were able to burn it down, and we got a lot of training out of that, as did they. We did some rope training. Most people probably saw, news two came out one day and fed us lunch, and, and hung out with us for an afternoon, and just talked with us and asked what we did, and they were, they, the lady that was out was surprised we were in Williamson County, I didn't know. She said, "Oh, this is Williamson County?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am." She said she thought she was in Dixon, so I'm not sure. But, again, if any residents, or if you know neighbors that need fire, or smoke detectors, please contact the fire department. We will set up a time to come out and install those for anybody that needs them in the city. Questions?
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Item 9, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor.
No old business, item 12, should be 11, I believe, new business. B, Resolution 2019. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Resolution 2019, acceptance of Heartland Reserve infrastructure.
Second.
Have a first and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, roll call vote.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor.
Item C, release of the maintenance bond for Heartland Reserve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a first and a second, any discussion? Ms. Johnson, roll call vote.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins, and just to clarify, and I should have clarified on the last one as well, everything's done, everything's been looked at by the engineer, and it is all ready to go, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And, and if I'm, if I may point out on, on these, which, which taking the action is fine on this, we, procedurally, we got, there's no procedural issue, but from an operational standpoint, we got a little ahead of ourselves on these. In, in the future, these will go to the planning commission for recommendation, and then come to the BOC. We've been talking about some changes, and this is one that made the change prior to we got there. Having said that, all of these are ready to go, there's no issue. We've done the inspections, we've had the bonds inspected, there's no issue with anything you have before you tonight.
Who did the inspection on this? Was it CEC?
CEC visited, and then the only item that staff rec, staff noticed was it was one storm drain in, in Heartland Reserve, and that's been repaired.
Johnson, roll call vote.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Blade? Aye. Item D, Resolution 21-19. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Resolution 21-19, acceptance of Kyle's Creek Phase II, Section 1 infrastructure. Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. 12E, release of maintenance bond for Kyle's Creek.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. Item 12, communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Burks?
A few things. I really want to thank the staff, the police department, the fire department, Public Works, everyone that made our 4th of July event, or 3rd of July event, I guess, really. Such a great time. Unfortunately, the rain did not cooperate, so we just had to go home and change and come back. But, still, it was, it was a great time, we really appreciate all the work y'all put into it, so the citizens could have a good time. Second of all, regarding the playground, I've always enjoyed the park, my kids have always enjoyed the playground, they're not real happy that it's gone either. But I think we took the steps we had to take. We do intend to rebuild a playground. We want to take this opportunity to make sure when we build a new playground, that it is inclusive of those who are handicapped, the autistic children in our community, that they can get there and use it and enjoy it, as well as everybody else. In the previous playground, we did have a swing that was handicap accessible, however, it was not as easy to use as one would hope. So we want to make sure we get all those things right. I think we can. Really, we'll appreciate citizen input in this. We will work very hard to get this done as quick as we can, but this will be a bit of a process. I know we want to look at some grants, we want to look at corporate sponsorships, if citizens want to donate to the Friends, we're happy to accept that as well towards this project. So, anything anyone can do, we will appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, so I was there at the July 3rd event as well, and I tell you, it was just awesome to see that sense of community. All the people coming out in Fairview, the surrounding area of Fairview, and just the energy that was present during that event, it was just, that was home to me, so I was just proud to be a part of that, myself, my family. Regarding the, the playground, once again, you know, difficult, very difficult decision. I've got a nine-year-old that loves to play on that playground. I've got older kids that like to hang out with him when he plays on that playground, just because they like to play on it, too. You know, this is a, a huge opportunity for the community, once again, to gather around a a common goal. And speaking for myself, I am excited, very excited to take on this challenge, to be a part of this challenge, to build one of the nicest playgrounds that we have in the region. And I'm talking with the other commissioners, we're all committed. That is such an important piece of Bowie Park. And I know Dr. Bowie would love to see that beautiful playground there to bring people closer to nature, and that's what I look at it as. People love to walk in the trails, but children come there for that playground and it's bringing them closer to nature. It's letting them experience nature in its fullness. So although that was a tough thing to take that playground down, it was the right thing to do, I feel, and I am 100% committed to put a wonderful playground back just as soon as we can, but we need to be strategic and we need a, we need a, we need community involvement and we need that mission that everybody can gather around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, again, as the other commissioners have already said, the July 4 event here in Fairview is, I've said it before, is always my family's, one of my family's favorite events. Even with the rain, we got rained on, I think, twice because we're early birds. So we were here for the first rain and the second rain. So by the time we dried out, we got soaking wet again. But it was interesting to see the community and people that didn't even know each other all hunkering together under towels or umbrellas or whatever they had, just everybody trying to keep everybody else dry. And I think that's probably a memory that we'll have forever is the time we went to the July 4 event and we're soaking wet. But it was just a great event. So thank you to all the city and the staff that put that event on and everybody that came out for that. I don't think anybody in this room probably does not have a playground story, right? We all have those stories. The first thing that we ever did when we moved 800 miles from home was we moved to this little town called Fairview and my two-year-old daughter at the time needed something to do while we were trying to find out where we were going to live and Bowie Nature Park and that playground was where we landed. It was a hard decision, but like Commissioner Dawson said, it was the right decision. And I am excited about the opportunity that we have moving forward and what we can build out there to carry on the legacy of what Bowie Nature Park is and the opportunity that we have as a community and as a board, as the Friends of Bowie and all of us have an opportunity to come together and build something even better than was there before so that future children will have an awesome experience that they can tell their kids about one day. So get involved as these community meetings are announced. We'll announce those, I'll probably be on the Fairview's website. I'm sure they'll be on Facebook and other social media outlets. So just, I encourage you to be a part of those and let's build something awesome together.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Rainey.
Well, I also must mention July 3, when we got wet so many times in so many different ways that I find it hard to even express those. Also, we've been talking about the playground and I think we would all be remiss if we did not mention Chris Grayson. I mean, Chris was the one that came here with six children, I believe, and realized there was nothing to do, and after she had the six, she had three more. So I guess she found a place for them to play. If you haven't looked at the website for Hendersonville, there's a playground called Mary's Magic Play, and it is beautiful. All people, no matter what their ability, can use that playground. We have learned so much in 20 years about what kids need, what families need. I think this will be a great opportunity for us to develop that sort of playground in Fairview. And also, when you build that playground, people from everywhere will come because they have kids that need that sort of play. So when people come from out of town, you know, that also increases, you know, stops at the local cafe, food, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at that and aim toward that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I also will comment on the rain on the 3rd. It was at one point refreshing until it felt like a flood. I did enjoy the immense sense of community that was shared that night, and I look forward to that same sense of community as we go forward with the addition of the new playground. I was honored to be a part of the original build of that playground and so it was emotionally hard for me to see it come down, but I knew that day we planted a new seed and from that new seed, good growth would come. So I look forward to partnering with all of the citizens and all of the boards that wish to be a part of this and us all working together as we did in 1998 and erect an even better and more spectacular playground. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.